Believe me, I thought I was gonna be.
Thank you.
It's the one thing I struggle with.
Okay, I think we're ready to call this meeting to order of the Planning Commission Tuesday, December 25th. Can we have a confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act and required notice has been properly provided?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was met.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Gilmore. He had indicated he might try to join via Zoom, but he is not present. Commissioner McTell.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Bernhardt.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Chair Hay.
Here.
So that gives us a quorum of six members, and we've provided notice of today's meeting. So that allows us to move forward and consider today's agenda.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody got to take a look at the meetings, entertain a motion for approval of the meetings for the December 21st meeting.
Do we approve the minutes of the December 21, 2021 regular meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move down to new business and public hearing items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We apologize that we were out of planners at the January 18th meeting, so we've had to reschedule all the agenda items on that. You will see that attached to the packet for item 3.1, which is a public hearing and report on petition 4413, which was filed by Mr. Lonnie Wilson on behalf of Kansas Property Investors and LT 123. The petition was requesting the closure and vacation of Walnut Street west of Broadway Boulevard. That attached to your packet is an email that says due to the opposition of the neighboring property owners, they're withdrawing that. With the withdrawal, nonetheless, we had advertised a public hearing on this, so just for the commission's information, if a property owner tries to close and vacate a street, and there's property owners that abut that street that are opposed to that, if they register their objection in writing, that pretty much blocks the request. So since we did have an advertised public hearing, we're unable to hold it on the 18th. We would recommend that we've advertised the hearing, it has to be held, so we would recommend that the chair open the public hearing on petition 4413 filed by Lonnie Wilson, that the commission receive any public comments in person or via Zoom. We also have the comments in writing. And then, given that opportunity, if no one is present or has any comments, then we would close the public hearing and announce the petition's been withdrawn and close it out, but we need to do that in a public session.
Okay. So I'd like to open the public hearing on report of petition number 4413 filed by Lonnie Wilson on behalf of the Kansas Property Investors LLC and LT 123 LLC petitioners.
I'm not seeing anybody present in the room. Is there anybody via Zoom, Dustin?
We do not have anybody logged on to Zoom at the moment.
So I'll just, for your reference, this property right here is owned by Bohm Farm and Ranch, and it's operated as a salvage yard. This is owned by Concordia Travel Center, which does business as Walters Oil Company. They both have access to this section, and you'll find in your packet written objections to the vacation received from them. And so if we have no one physically present and no one joining via Zoom, we'll just make note of those two written objections and turn it back to the chair to close the hearing unless there's any questions that any member of the commission has for staff.
Okay. Any questions for anybody? Okay, do we have to ask for any public input?
Well, I think we've looked on Zoom, and in person, we don't have anybody here. We just have the written report. So with that, and no questions, I believe the chair.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing on petition 4413.
And we will close this case out, having been withdrawn. So I appreciate your time and patience on that, but that's why we advertise, that's why we do the public hearings, so that we can see if there are objections. So that closes out item 3.1.
Okay, we'll go to 3.2.
3.2 is a public hearing item also, and it is a public hearing on application CU 22-1. That's been filed by Mr. Troy Tauber on behalf of KBT Company LLC, and the request is for approval of a conditional use permit to allow a contractor's office in a C3 shopping center district. The property in question is on the east side of Dover Drive, south of West Cloud Street. So we've given you a little bit of information about the background on this property. At the time that Mr. Joe Kronenberger was operating the Tally Ho Mobile Home Park, he used this property as kind of a maintenance shop for making repairs and odds and ends associated with maintaining the park. When the Tally Home Mobile Home Park was sold and became West Cloud Commons, the site was abandoned by Mr. Kronenberger and essentially cleared off, except for the one building at the south end. Well, now, Mr. Tauber has purchased this property, and he would like to construct an office and workspace for his residential remodeling business. Staff thinks that this property is owned shopping center district primarily as an extension of a filling station and then convenience store that was built at the southeast corner of Cloud and Dover. It used to be a quick trip and had gasoline sales, and the gas pumps were removed, and it's still operating as a convenience shop of sorts, although they don't sell gasoline anymore. So the city's development review team had a meeting with Mr. Tauber and explained that a contractor's office was a conditional use, it had to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission. And so he submitted this application to build a 40 by 70 metal building with three garage bay doors that would face south. The building would have a 16-foot eve height and a 22-foot roof height. It would cover about 25% of the lot, which is a little over 11,000 square feet. So your role this afternoon is to look at the property, the surrounding property, determine whether the proposal to construct a contractor's office and shop on this site would have any negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, and to determine whether the building location, building design, and plan would be compatible with the surrounding uses. So if you've looked at your vicinity maps, your aerial photos, you can see that you've got a convenience store to the north, a vacant commercial lot, and an existing contractor's office building. You have railroad tracks and single-family homes to the east, and then you've got the manufactured home park, which is West Cloud Commons to the west. And so this area is a mix of vacant land and commercial industrial uses. Even the two existing buildings that are there are pre-existing, and they wouldn't probably be considered to be desirable uses to have located adjacent to residential areas to east and west, but they exist nonetheless. And at the south end of Dover Drive, there's a strip of single-family homes along both sides of the street. They're modestized homes, they're slab-on-grade, they were built in the mid-'60s, right about the time the Air Force Base was closing. And then you have homes on Roberts Avenue, which is east of the railroad tracks. So this building is similar to some of the existing uses already on Dover Drive, but with any conditional use, looking at the design, appearance, location, orientation is part of the planning commission's role. And so the plan is for an all-metal building with a contrasting metal wainscot at the base of the building. In some cases, the planning commission has asked the applicant to look at having a brick or masonry wainscot. That is going to depend on the location and the setting. I don't know if you're familiar with a quick-lube property that's on South Ohio, just north of Wendy's, but in that case, that was a predominantly metal building, but the planning commission asked that the applicant, in that case, provide a brick wainscot or add that to the building because of the Wendy's and the other brick buildings along that side of Ohio Street. We don't have that case here, but we just wanted to bring that to the commission's attention. There are water lines and sanitary sewer lines in Dover Drive that can serve this property. There is a 24-inch storm sewer in Dover Drive, and that drains south into the Dry Creek Channel that comes under I-135. The applicant plans to grade this site to drain west towards Dover Drive. Dover Drive is a local residential street, but contractors' offices are not like convenience stores, trips in and out are relatively infrequent. And so your options this afternoon, after taking any public input we received, would be to approve a conditional use permit to allow the contractor's office and shop to locate on this lot. You could approve the application and plan, subject to any conditions or revisions to the plan you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration if you think that additional information is needed about the project, or you could deny the application if you don't think this would be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So we've reviewed the plan, and we find that it conforms with all C3 development standards, the landscape area set aside, and the front yard, the off-street parking. So our recommendation would be to approve the plan, subject to the six conditions that we have outlined on pages six and seven of your report. And with that, we'd be open to any comments or questions you have. One thing we wanted to note, which is a little unusual, is, for instance, if you're in a C5 district and you have a contractor's office, the C5 zoning district allows outdoor storage. The C3 district, while it allows contractor's offices, requires everything to be kept indoors. So we wanted to make sure the planning commission knew that, that information was shared with the applicant. Obviously, they can park vehicles and trailers associated with those vehicles in the parking area, but building materials, equipment, things like that have to be kept inside the building, and so we don't have to worry about a screened outdoor storage area because this site's not supposed to have one. So with that, we'd be open to any questions you have. We do have the applicant present if you have questions of the applicant.
Okay, anybody got any questions for staff? Dean, I just got one. The lighting on this building, is that going to affect any of the adjacent properties around?
Well, what we do usually at the building permit stage is, on condition number five, we require, when the building permit plans are submitted, to receive cut sheets for the lighting fixtures. In some, most of these cases, they'll put what's called wall pack lighting, and they'll mount it on the side of the building. And so we would just want to review that to make sure that it is a shaded light. We've had circumstances, and usually it starts with a phone call, but when it was referred to as Galaxy Center, was put in on South Ninth Street, and it's a new building that was put in north of what was Water True Value, then became Brown Mackey. And it was, I don't know, the back wall was like 20 feet from residential backyards, and so they put wall pack lighting on the building, and the lighting just went straight out into people's back windows. So we went out, and we had the property owner put shields on the light so that the light was cast down onto the pavement and not out. And so that's what we would be looking at here, that before there was any wall pack lighting on the building, that we would make sure that it's, we'd look at the cut sheets to make sure that it was shielded light and not just flat light that would point out to the sides. Because we do have homes on Roberts to the east, and we have the manufactured homes directly to the west, so that's what we look at in that circumstance.
And we're okay with drainage and everything?
Yeah, we would want the applicant to comment or confirm whether he's planning to use a gutter and downspout system, but we have found that when we're trying to control roof runoff on buildings like this, that having a gutter and downspout system that directs it where you say you're going to take it is the way to go. And so condition number two would require this building to have a gutter and downspout system, so the roof runoff would go to Dover Drive.
Any questions for the applicant? Would the applicant like to add anything?
Yeah, the downspout and gutter.
Yeah, I have questions for the applicant. So. If you'd want to come up to the podium, please, and just state your name and address for the, so Asia can get it into the record.
Troy Tauber, my home address.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
726 Rittgers Lane, here in Salina, Kansas, 67401.
What was that street address again?
726 Rittgers, R-I-T-T-G-E-R-S, Lane.
So number of staff that you have that would be employed at this location? Currently, and in possible future?
Right now, it would be three. Future, I don't really know. I mean, I can't imagine being over, I mean, 10 would be a crazy number, but I think it'll be more like five or six.
Okay. So within the plan and your parking area, currently, the parking spots, at least in the report, said there would be three off-street parking spots plus one handicapped accessible. If you currently have three employees plus yourself, that would be four parking spots, handicapped accessible for somebody to come in for contract work. If you're also parking your trailers and trucks, where is everybody going to park at this point in time?
Inside the building. All the, like, I'll park inside the building and my work pickup. I only have one work pickup, and that'll park inside the building.
Okay, and then your staff will park inside the building too, or out on the lot?
They actually meet at the job site.
Okay. So anticipation, at some point, they're probably going to be onsite? I mean, they ever meet there? And the reason I'm looking at this is just running into situations with parking spots. We've had some issues here recently with plans and the number of parking spots, and then everybody parks out on the street, and you can't get down the streets. So, and if you're parking trucks, and you've got trailers, now your lot's filled with trucks and trailers, and your staff is parking out on the street, and it's still a residential area.
Yeah.
So how many employees would be in the office or reporting to the office on a daily basis?
The only one that reports to the office on a daily basis that picks up the pickup, there's one person that reports to the office.
I just still think that we should consider the total number of employees, whether they typically report or not. At some point, they probably will be, and their likelihood that they all could be there may not have occurred at this point in time, doesn't mean that it won't happen in the future. So if we have four employees, I think we need to have space and parking for at least four employees. If you're doing residential work, you're going to have people coming in, probably to the location, I would assume, at some point in time, plus parking for trailers and trucks.
Dustin, can you pull up the site plan on that?
Yes.
I would note that, just as with a resident, we didn't look at it from that standpoint, but on a residential property, if you have a parking spot that's inside your garage, that's counted as an off-street parking space, notwithstanding that it's in a garage. So depending on what is stored in the three bays, the three bays are deep enough that you could probably have too deep in there, but if you just looked at it as three, there's three covered parking spaces and four open spaces. If you look at the covered building and the overhead doors as providing parking spaces, we didn't look at it that way because we don't want to presume to control what gets put in the parking base. But if you have a site plan for a residential property, and it has a single wide driveway with a single space and a garage, we would consider that to be two spaces, one in the garage and one in the driveway. We just didn't look at the garage bays in this case as parking spaces.
Right, and I don't think that you could in this point in time, the fact that he's going to, we're going to store materials inside the workshop itself, so you're going to have a bay, a door, in order to take materials in and out, which is going to limit your ability to park or have that as a parking spot. If you count it as a parking spot, then they're going to store materials outside.
As a practical matter, tell me what you envision. I mean, if somebody does come there, are they going to pull up in front of one of the bays, get out, take care of their business, and get back to the job site?
Yeah. I mean, right now, we're renting a 25 by 50 storage unit on Chilling Road that I parked the pickup in one of the bays. Yeah, we do have material in there, but, you know, we can get in our vehicle and pull it out and put material in the back of it, and that's how we have all in the front of it. We have all of our extra material, which I don't keep a lot of extra material, but extra tools and stuff go up in the front, and then we pull the pickup right in. And obviously, my pickup goes to my house every night.
So on an average day, how many people come to your office there?
The storage building?
Yeah.
Just that one employee. And I might go there to pick up some stuff, but that's typically it.
So actually, what we're looking at then on that is you've got one ADA parking spot, and then we've got three other parking spots plus the one that's going to be inside the building itself.
Well, there's three garage doors.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about, according to this, there should be a, there's a parking space here, and then two, there's one there, and then two there, and then the ADA below.
Yes, yep.
And then one inside, so that's actually.
I mean, there's three overhead doors, I guess you could count as three, really, because...
Okay. Any more questions for the applicant? We got anybody on Zoom that would...
Would you not have anyone on Zoom? I would note that the applicant owns this parcel here, and what we're looking at today is the conditional use permit application is the north, like 110 feet, so about, you know, about this. So there is some surplus land available for future growth. If he, his business grows to the point where he needs extra ground, he has it currently. So if there's conditions that you'd like to make to make sure that you don't have any off-street parking problems, or you want to create a condition that triggers additional off-street parking be produced or created, he has land to do it, I guess is what I'm saying.
And mine isn't necessarily against you. Truly, mine is for truly kind of the planning commission itself, just we've had some issues, I think, here recently where parking doesn't, and I hope your business grows so much that you feel the other side of it. So I just was more preemptive than anything at this point in time.
No, honestly, I agree with the McAllisters thing. It's crazy that they park out there, it's so hard to get by, especially with that club car wash right there.
And I think it's the club car wash is where all the cars are being parked from, because if you go there in the night when club car wash is closed, there's less parking there on the street.
That would make sense. But they park in front of McAllisters, make it look like, yeah.
Yep, exactly.
Do you have any current plans for the other part of that lot?
No, I mean, this is honestly bigger than I think I'll need. I really, obviously, I have a 25 by 50 right now, and that's okay for what I need, but I figured build it as big as I can right now, and then I can grow into that. And that's kind of where we are with that, but yeah.
I'm like Commissioner Olson, I'd like to see you get big enough to.
Me too. Me too.
Dustin, worst-case scenario, could he, if he is expanding or having employees come there, could he park directly off the street where that third tree is? Could that be parking, or does there have to be so many feet before parking off the street? Oh, this tree here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I believe that's part of their, the front yard landscaping area, so that's why that's there for their tree units and their landscape area.
But you, if that was converted to paving, then you'd want to, you'd just adjust the planting plan there, but this plan provides way more green space than what is required, so that if that, if you needed to add the width of a stall there, you would still have a buffer that's on private property. You'd just want to make sure that whatever tree got planted there was located appropriately, but yes, you could, if you wanted to carve out another nine-foot stall right here, that would fit there, and you would still have adequate green space in the front yard there.
Is that what you were talking about there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then I guess my last question. Did you have an opportunity to take a look at the staff recommendations?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any concerns or questions with any of those?
No. No.
Thank you, that was my next question.
Okay, anybody from the public?
Would you not have anyone on Zoom?
This was a case where we sent notice out to all owners of property within 200 feet. The majority, of course, Mr. Tauber himself owns the property to the south, so we notified him of his own application, but the West Cloud Commons owners and the convenience store owners, and then some of the properties on Roberts, were notified, but we did not receive any public feedback from the letters we sent out that I'm aware of.
Okay. So we have no public, and we have nobody to speak, you do bring it back up to the, if the commission doesn't have any more questions, bring it back up for action?
I'd make a motion to approve application CU 21-1 for approval based on, I think it's a good location for this site, and I think the plan works out well.
I'd second that motion.
That's with the staff recommendations?
Yeah, with the recommendations, yep, sorry about that, on page six and seven.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second to approve application CU 22-1 on behalf of KBT Company and LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you.
So for your benefit, we'll send you an approval. So for your benefit, we'll send you an approval letter to you and your architect so he can know that he can move to the building permit stage.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I believe we will close the public hearings and move on to, uh, do we have any legislative matters?
We have no legislative matters other than a matter that we'll discuss under preliminary discussion items, so we will move to administration, which simply means that these are items where we didn't provide a sign or any public notice, they're, they're just administrative for the commission's action. So the first is item 3.3, and if you'll recall, back in December, you approved as a use a warehouse facility at the corner of Yost Drive and Waterwell Road with a condition that they come back with the required final site plan at a later date. So this has been submitted by Mike McCall of M Squared Architects on behalf of Millers of Claflin with the final design plans for their warehouse facility. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hirsch for a report.
Thank you. As Mr. Andrew noted, this is gonna be a familiar item to you because we, we met on phase one of the project, which was a conditional use permit application in November of, of 21. And on November, at that meeting, at November 21st, you did approve a conditional use as an allowed use for a, a warehouse at this facility or at this location with a number of conditions. Those conditions were, one, that the use, occupancy and construction of the building shall conform to the International Building Code. The second condition was that a final development plan for the project, including colored building elevation details and the materials, the design of the proposed building, a site plan and a detailed landscape planting plan showing the variety and size of proposed plantings shall be submitted for review by the planning commission with 18 month, within 18 months of the planning commission's approval of the warehouse as an allowed use. And then, condition number three, a final stormwater runoff calculation and proposed stormwater detention area design, if determined to be needed, shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to issuance of a building permit. And so typically, when we're looking at a conditional use permit in a planned commercial district, which this is, this is a PC 7 district, we look at the use and what we call the final development plan at the same time. In this case, the applicant chose to submit those separately in two stages. So stage one was to seek the planning commission's approval of the actual use itself, and then once they obtained that, then they went forward with design, uh, plans, producing design plans to bring before you for review. And those design plans are gonna consist of a site plan that features landscape plantings as well as building elevations that deal, or show details of the color and the materials that the proposed building will have. And so the, to start with, when we do this review, the things that the planning commission is going to be looking at is how well does the plan meet or adhere to the zoning requirements? In this case, the zoning requirements are gonna be the bulk regulations and the setbacks, lot coverages, parking and landscaping as it relates to the C7 district, as well as the aesthetic design of the building. Does it fit within a typical C7 district? Does it fit within this proposed neighborhood? Does it fit with the surrounding area and, and the other sites that are developed or potentially could be developed in the future? And so what we've done in the packet is we've looked at the C7 district, which is a district that is designed to act and preserve land for the use of highway commercial activities because we are at interchange next to a major highway and on an arterial road, which is Waterwell Road, the planning commission, when this, when the Yost Edition was originally platted, zoned this as a PC 7, envisioning it being conducive to highway commercial activities. And so that's, that's why we have the PC 7 zoning that we do, and so we're looking to see if what's being proposed adheres to that. So on pages five, six and seven, we've lined out all of those criteria and, and what, what development standards the proposed plan has to meet. And then on pages eight through 14, we go through what's being proposed so that we can look to see if we meet those criteria that are laid out on pages four through seven. So what I'll do is I'm gonna pick up the staff report on page eight, but that's just because what, what we do from here on out in our report is look at how the site conforms to those requirements. So when we have a planned district, the applicant has an opportunity to request exceptions or waivers to the rules, which are kinda like variances. In this case, the applicant is not requesting any variances and is proposing to build a warehouse that conforms to all of the C7 regulations. And so we will review that. For the lot design, the property itself is the north 275 feet of Lot 1, Block 2 of the Yost Edition. It is a lot split of Lot 1 and in reviewing that lot split, Mr. Andrew and myself, planning staff, has determined that the lots that are, the two lots that are created by this lot split, both would meet the minimum lot requirements in the C7 district and because it's a, it's the first time this lot has been split and you can split a, a lot once legally without having replat, replating of this property is not necessary. So both the north 275 and then the south portion of Lot 1, Block 2 are sufficiently sized lots for development. In looking at the street access and design, the, if I can get this to...
One thing we would wanna call the, the commission's attention to as far as the lot split, we've tried to highlight it in the report, but you're aware that this was crisscrossed by a major transmission line. That transmission line's been removed and the easement has been released by Evergy. So on paper, the survey that was submitted still showed that as if it was there, but it has been released and doesn't impact the developability of this north parcel.
So what Mr. Andrew is speaking of is there was a hundred-foot-wide easement for overhead electrical power with Evergy and that took up a substantial portion of the frontage along Yost Drive for this property and that easement has been vacated and those lines are being relocated. So this yellow stripe that you see that runs diagonally along the, the front, oh, probably 200 feet or so of the property, 'cause this, this yellow, yellow stripe that you see is a hundred-foot wide, so just to give you some, some dimensional context, that, that easement has been, been vacated and those utilities are being relocated. So street access, the, the site is adjacent to a 60-foot right away on Yost Drive as well as Waterwell Road and both of these, these roads are wide enough and constructed for traffic that would exceed what we would anticipate a warehouse to have. There is a, a fair amount of truck traffic already on the site, or at least on Yost Drive with the KDOT facilities, maintenance facilities at the south end of Yost, as well as Old Dominion Trucking and their terminal that is on the east side of Yost, a little bit further to the south. So there are truck traff, trucks and truck traffic that use Yost Drive currently, so it's not an unprecedented use in terms of the, the type of vehicles that would be accessing the area. Again, this would have less traffic or generate less traffic than Travel Plaza or a hotel at the same location, which is typically what you see in a C7 zoning district. In looking at the utilities, there are existing utilities on site and all of them are sufficiently sized for the proposed development. You have a sewer line that runs along the west side of Yost, comes to the south and then crosses interstate and then connects back into Ninth Street to the east. Same thing with the water line and it, it loops all the way along Waterwell, 24-inch line, and then south to Yost and then all the way across again to, to Ninth Street where it reconnects to the rest of the system. So that's, that's the water sanitary sewer and then you have, have drainage on the site where you have a burrow pit that has been formed. It hasn't been officially engineered and calculations haven't been completed as to what the capacity might or might not be, but it's something that could be used for detention if it is so required. So one of the things that the commission you, as a board, required as part of the conditional use permit approval is a, an analysis and drainage report study to confirm that the stormwater runoff that would be produced by the proposed development won't have any issues on the surrounding property and to see if there's additional detention that would be required. And what would happen is that condition would carry over and should you approve the final development plan and the applicant moves forward with the building permit, that will be one of the requirements and prior to issuance of the building permit, that those drainage studies get completed prior to issuing that, that building permit. So looking at building orientation, the, the building itself is 180 feet wide facing Yost and then 120 feet deep along Waterwell, so that's the depth. And so the, the main body of the building is 39,600 square feet. There is also a, a canopy cover that is proposed that is 24 feet by 49 feet, and so that increases the total lot coverage or building footprint to 40,776 square feet. By point of comparison, the Old Dominion Trucking, which is on the east side, is 7,800 and the police shooting range and training center is a little under, little under 16,000 square feet. So this would be more than double both of those, just as a point of, of reference. Setback requirements, there is a 30-foot building setback along Waterwell Road and Yost Drive and the closest setback that we have is along Waterwell and we're 41 feet and change from there and a much more substantial setback that, that well exceeds the 30-foot requirement along Yost Drive. So we look at the building design. I'll look at the black and white version first, just 'cause it has some of the... So what the applicant is proposing is primarily a middle siding building and three of the sides will have, have vertical panels. So you see on the south, west and north side, you have vertical panels. On the east side, which would be considered the front of the building, 'cause it faces Yost Drive and it's where customers will, will pull up, it does have a different facade. Primarily, you see some, some masonry and glass underneath the canopy, so you have the 25 by 49-feet canopy and that covers the main entrance for the building where both customers and employees would enter the, the site. And that will have brick masonry along the, the bottom four feet, some wainscoting there. And you have two overhead doors that will be glass overhead doors versus solid panel doors and you'll also have a glass entrance door with some windows around it just to add additional glass. In addition to that, on the front facade, you'll have a wainscoting along the south or the, the bottom four feet of the building structure and that is a midnight bronze color. And then you have horizontal siding above that and that is what they call an ash gray. And then you have white flat panel siding above that before you get to the, the siding above, above the, along the roof line there. So, and I'll, we'll take a view of the color renderings, 'cause it makes the, makes it stand out a little more now. The, the color renderings don't show the glass overhead doors or the brick the way that the black and white does, but it does kinda give you some context in terms of the texture of the materials as well as, as the color and how that might be a little bit different. And so this would be brick and the, the overhead doors here would be glass and then here you can see the horizontal siding that you have and then you have this, this white, almost kinda like a, a transom band of some sort, that, that's, that's white and differentiates the main body to the, the top, which again will have vertical siding at a, a darker gray color. And so that, that color scheme is, is consistent on all, on all four sides. However, the east side is the only side that doesn't have 100% vertical standard metal, metal siding. The only doors that we have are, we have two man doors on the east facade, so you have the main entrance one, there's also a, another main man door in between the four overhead doors. And so you have six overhead doors, four of them, which are connected to a, a loading dock, so there's actually a recessed area where trucks can back down into a trucking dock, a ramp. And so you have those four overhead doors, two man doors, and then none of the other sides have any windows. There are some doors, if you look at the black and white drawings on the west facade, but they're, they're solid doors and not glass doors, so that gives you an idea of what's being proposed in terms of the building design. Off-street parking, staff has calculated that the office space and storage space within the warehouse facility would require 20 off-street parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 22, so they are meeting all of those requirements and all of the dimensions of the proposed spaces meet the dimensional requirements for off-street parking. For loading and unloading, as I mentioned, there are four recessed docking bays here along the frontage, the east front, where trucks can pull in and, and then back down into the ramp and employees can access the inventory from the truck or put inventory into the truck from those overhead doors. The staff, when we were talking to the applicant about this particular design and some of our concerns about having dock ramps right at the front of the building, especially with it being a commercial building and that being more of an industrial appearance and the fact that Old Dominion intentionally put their docking bays on the sides and rear of the building so that they wouldn't have that as, as a focal point in the front of their building, we asked why, why those bays weren't put on either the side or the rear of the building with the, with the south side being the side and then the west side being, being the rear. And the applicant responded with, that they didn't have enough width, the site was not sufficiently wide enough to, to have docking bays on the south side and still have proper maneuverability of the trucks. And on the west side, they have a potential future expansion in mind, which is what this hashed line is, and they were reluctant to put in their docking bays back here if they were going to be torn out in the future for the future expansion that they have envisioned for, for the property. And so that's how we, we came to the applicant proposing the overhead doors and the, the docking ramp in the front of the building. Landscaping and buffering, the site, because it's a, a corner lot and does receive a reduced requirement in terms of the amount of front yard landscaping that is required to be provided, it is required to provide 9,268 square feet and the applicant is proposing almost twice that, at 17,573 square feet along the two frontages. seventy-three square feet along the two frontages. In terms of the tree units that are required, the landscape regulations would require nineteen total tree units. The applicant is proposing eight shade trees, which you can see along Yost Drive, and then they're also proposing another thirteen ornamental trees, which comes out to twelve point three units. And so what that means is close to seven additional units would be required in order to get to the minimum of nineteen total tree units. In addition to that, the landscape regulations also require that off-street parking spaces that have more than six parking spaces, which this does, are required to be screened with parking lot screening. That's usually accomplished through some sort of shrubs or low-growing vegetation. So that would be something else that the applicant would need to add to the site. Signage for the site, we do see that on the color elevations and on the black and white elevations that there is a Ashley Distribution Center sign that's being proposed on the white band on the front. And that appears to be the only signage that's being proposed. We would ask that the applicant confirm that and clarify if there are any ground signs or pole signs that are also proposed, as those would be part of your review and subject to your review and approval as well. In terms of the amount of signage that would be allowed, the C-seven district allows four square feet per lineal foot of building frontage. And in this case, we have over four hundred feet of building frontage, so you're looking at sixteen hundred square feet of sign area, which Mr. Mike said will tell you is an enormous amount that you will never, ever, you will never, ever need. It's more than they'll, they could even dream of. So sign area is not a concern that staff has. We would just ask that the applicant clarify if this is the only sign that they're proposing so that if there are additional signs that we could hopefully find a way to get approval from the planning commission on those, since that is part of their review as well. So the sign or the site plan review process, first, the city staff shall review the site plan and determine compliance with ordinance, regulations and policies, which we have done. And we find the actual site plan to be in conformance with all of the C-seven district requirements as well as all of the off-street parking requirements. There is screening around a compaction machine, which would be connected to the front of the building, which is what you see this black, this kind of black box here in the elevation drawings. There's also an eight-foot screening fence that screens some dumpsters that are on the south side of the building. So we have proper screening. The only items or corrections that staff would see are the landscaping and it wouldn't be a landscaping area issue, it'd be just adding additional tree units as well as parking lot screening. So the additional tree units and parking lot screening would be the only items that would, that would be needed in order to bring the proposed plan into compliance with the C-seven district requirements and landscape requirements and parking requirements. B, the planning commission shall review the plan to determine if it demonstrates satisfactory quality of design and compatibility with other uses and structures in the neighborhood. I did take some pictures of the other uses that are there. There's only two other uses within the city and that's the Old Dominion trucking and then the police training facility. So this is Old Dominion trucking, looking at the site from Yost. You can see that they put landscaping in front and then their parking for employees in front. And then they have their docking bays on both the north, south sides of the building. So there's another view, another view. This here is the new training facility that the police department has. They have kind of a large zere escaping area with a lot of grasses, shrubs and then trees. And they did a warm season grass, so that's why everything is brown because it's not currently, it's currently dormant. And you can see that they do have some overhead doors that face Yost. They're not, they don't have any docking bays, but they do have some overhead doors. And in lieu of metal, they do have a masonry and tilt-up concrete exterior that they used for that facility. And so that kind of gives you an idea of what has been proposed in the past out on Yost Drive. And then so C, the planning commission shall prepare and transmit to the applicant its findings with respect to the extent at which the site complies with the parking signage, landscaping regulations and policies of the city, as well as the development standards of the zoning district in which it is located. And then we'll get into what those options mean. So we have identified four different options for you. The first is to approve the final development plan as submitted. The second is to approve the proposed final development plan, subject to certain revisions or conditions. The third is to postpone consideration if additional information is needed or if you feel like revisions or changes are needed in order to approve the plan. This is particularly, this would be particularly noteful if you find the aesthetic or the appearance of the building isn't of a C-seven or commercial appearance. Number four is to deny the application if the required findings of fact cannot be made or if the commission believes that the proposed final development plan would be incompatible with development of the surrounding neighborhood. Staff would note that in two thousand seventeen, the city commission adopted an amendment to the plain commercial district regulations and have, that amendment created specific standards, which we've attached to the report and it's noted as attachment number seven, but it gets into some of the details of what is required in order for it to be compatible, including some of the aesthetics, which kind of lines up with our report that we've given you. So when we get to staff's comments and our concerns, we would note that on November sixteenth, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to allow a furniture warehouse to be constructed, subject to review and approval of a final development plan, which is what we're looking at now. The applicant has now submitted a final development plan and aside from adding additional trees and screening plants to the landscape planting plan, the proposed final development plan meets all of the zoning regulation requirements. However, staff is concerned that the proposed metal building with minimal windows, minimal masonry, large overhead doors along the front facade and a hundred-foot-wide truck dock ramp at the front of the building may create more of an industrial appearance than is typical for a C-seven zone property. With the proposed furniture warehouse being the very front of the subdivision and the first development property, developed property that people would see coming into the Yost Edition from Waterwell Road, staff is concerned the proposed plan may influence future development of the Yost Edition towards other industrial uses that may not necessarily be compatible with the C-seven district. All right. So what that means is we've, we've got kind of two options as far as recommendations and it's really a subjective assessment or review on your part on which you feel is most appropriate. So we do believe that the site does meet all of the C-seven development standards, again with the exception of some additional trees and screening that are needed, which could be easily taken care of. And so then if the applicant finds, or if the planning commission finds that the proposed site, development pattern, building design and building materials are compatible with existing developments in the Yost Edition and will not detract from the commercial appearance, the C-seven district is designed to preserve, staff would recommend approval of the proposed development plan. And we have a number of conditions, we have eight of them on page fourteen. And so that would basically be option two, which would be approval with conditions. And so that would be our recommendation, if you find that the appearance of the building is compatible with the surrounding area. However, if the planning commission finds that the site development pattern, building design, building materials would detract from the commercial appearance of the C-seven district, which, in which the C-seven district is designed to preserve, staff would recommend that the planning commission provide guidance to the applicant on revisions that could be made to the final development plan to better conform to the surrounding area. So that would be option number three, in which you would postpone a consideration based on a number of criteria that you feel aren't necessarily aligning with the surrounding area and give the applicant an opportunity to make those revisions to bring the site or the development plan into conformance with the surrounding area. So I think when staff reviewed this, we noted that it does meet the zoning requirements with the additional plantings. Then it becomes a matter of, does the design and materials of the building fit the context of the area and what the C-seven district is attempting to accomplish at this, in this subdivision? And how comfortable you are with what's being proposed in terms of the building aesthetic and the way that the building is oriented and the way that the site is laid out. So with that, staff will take any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Yeah, on the Old Dominion trucking, what is the siding material on that?
That is a metal siding building.
That's a what?
I believe that it's a metal siding building. So the Old Dominion has metal siding and it's a vertical metal siding and there's nothing differentiating about it. That is one thing that the applicant is proposing here, where there's multiple colors to kind of break up the facade a little bit, where if you look at the Old Dominion site, which I've got pulled up here, it's pretty monochrome where you don't really have a lot of different, differentiating colors. You do have additional windows, that's something that's a little different about it and you don't have the overhead doors in the front, but the materials are going to be very similar.
Okay. And the law enforcement, that's back to masonry, right?
Yeah, so there you have different masonry products and tilt-up concrete and things of that nature. And that's what this looks like here.
Dustin, on page nine, it says this plan did not provide sewer service to the lot west of Dry Creek. Is that the one, is that the other lot that for future expansion, is that what they're...
Yeah, so there is a lot on the west side. You have big hay, big, is it just big hay, is that what it's called Dean?
Yeah, big hay storage.
Yeah.
Hay harvesting and storage.
Yeah.
And the reason that's used for agricultural purposes that way is that there, you can see right here, this is the sewer line that comes up Yost Drive. There's no sewer service available to this lot, but there's, if somebody builds in here on the west half of this, they can tie back in here. But what that report's referring to is this lot that's part of the Yost Edition, but it's west of the creek, that doesn't have any sewer service.
And that's zone agricultural then?
It's actually zoned industrial, I believe.
Yeah, so it's I-two.
Okay.
So it's part of the Yost Edition, but because it's on the other side of the creek, it almost feels like it's, like it's not, I guess you would say, seems separate and functions separately.
Any more questions for staff?
Yeah, one question Dustin, what's the minimum on evergreen trees planted height? Is it five feet?
It's, yes, for newly planted, it's five feet.
Okay, I just wanted to make a note of that, they had one gallon on the plant also.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we go by height for those, you're correct.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Dustin, on farther west on Waterwell, I can't remember the name of the business there, but on the north side of the road, you don't have any pictures of that by any chance?
Salina Vortex.
Salina Vortex, thank you.
Um, I don't. And they have a different zoning classification, I think they are I-two if I remember right, let me pull that up.
I believe they're I-three, but they're industrial.
Right. So they're I-three, so they do have a pretty substantial amount of landscaping and green space and all the paving, but it's all voluntary, all that's voluntary.
Where I was going with all this was the look was, is modern there and it's darker, it kind of almost mimics this building presentation that we're looking at, so it's not...
Right. Right, the color schemes, you have gray color schemes on both buildings, that's true.
So it's really, it's a transition area. You have commercial, a commercial corridor that's north of Waterwell Road on Ninth Street and then you're transitioning across the interstate and you're transitioning to the industrial area around the airport. So it's, this corner is kind of going to be the trendsetter or whatever, establish the look for that corridor leading to, from the interstate to Centennial Road and also the entryway into Yost Edition. So that's why staff went into a little more detail about the building itself, just so that you could, you could have a full appreciation for what the plan is. It's, the warehouse is a permitted use and one would expect a warehouse to look like a warehouse, but there's more commercial-oriented warehouse space and there's a purely industrial look. So we were just wanting to make sure that you had the details of what the design entailed.
I remember, I served on the planning commission when we approved the Old Dominion project there and there was some concern about this being a highway commercial type look, you know, what a, what a trucking facility would look like there. And we also discussed at that time how a lot of bigger cities have a distribution hub on one end of town for materials and things like that.
Yeah, so what, you know, we do the best we can and at the planning commission's, previous planning commission's directions, they looked at our interchange locations as a finite resource for the community and it's like, well, we should make sure that we don't take away the opportunity to have highway commercial uses next to the interstate. But what you can see is that we have this layout and initial plan for the Yost Edition and we have a KDOT maintenance facility, we have a police training facility, we have a trucking terminal. What we don't have is any market interest in highway commercial-oriented businesses like a travel plaza or hotel or anything like that. So it's become pretty clear that this is not viewed by the market as a, as an interstate-oriented highway commercial location. And so that's why warehousing is probably an appropriate use. It's just a question of, is the building a commercial enough design for property that's an employment area but zoned commercial as opposed to industrial?
So also I believe in November, when we talked about this last time, that we were also looking at future retail sales in this building?
So what the, and the applicant can clarify or speak more to this, but what the plan is, as staff understands it, is that this would be a distribution center and it wouldn't necessarily have retail in it, but it would have the opportunity for people that are in Salina or in close proximity to Salina, if they ordered a furniture set and they wanted to pick it up, they could come here and pick it up. And so if you look at the overhead or the elevation drawings on the overhead projector here, you can see that by the main kind of area, the main pickup area, the main entrance, this is where they've dressed up the frontage a little bit more even, where they have the brick wainscoting and the overhead doors are glass versus the solid that you see for the other shipping doors and to be a little bit more of an inviting, I guess, more commercial appearance, at least where the public would be coming to the site to pick up furniture. So yes, you're correct that there is the opportunity for people to come onto the site and pick up furniture. I don't believe there's any showrooms or retail area inside, it would just be, I went to an Ashley Furniture showroom, I saw a piece of furniture, I ordered it and then I go here to pick it up.
Okay.
And this is warehouse only, it's storage and it's office and it's no retail. If there was any plan to add retail, then this would be coming back before the... If there was any plan to add retail, then this would be coming back before the commission to review that revision. I think one, one thing that might put some perspective on this is that we had, did have a meeting with Ashley Furniture where they were looking on, to add on to the former Aldi's store, which they have purchased, and that is in a shopping center district. And we told them they could have additional storage there, but because it's in a shopping center district, they had to maintain a showroom. But here, since this is a warehouse and it's purely a warehouse, they don't have to have and don't plan to have any kind of customer showroom. So it's, it should be viewed as not a place where customers go except to pick up something they may have already ordered, but it's not a place to shop.
So just to kind of give you a feel for how the applicant views the, the building operating, you have the main mandor here with the, the overhead doors for customer pickup here, and then you have the four main docks for shipping and receiving furniture here, then you have a big open space where employees can work, and then you have a trash compactor here. So this is for, you know, breaking down boxes and things like that, that, or, or equipment and materials that's used for shipping and putting in the trash compactor. And there's also here on the south side, there's an overhead door with access to a couple of dumpsters. So in a similar way, we have a way to handle and manage the refuse that's usually associated with packaging and, and things like, of that nature. Then what you see for the bulk of the building is storage area, I don't know if the, I think these are storage racks or some, yeah, racking, it's a racking system. So they will have a, a pretty robust racking system for their inventory that comes in and out. And then you do have some offices and restrooms here on the, at the south side. So here's, here's where you do have some office space and restrooms for the people working within the shipping facility, within the distribution center.
This may be a question for the applicant, do we know that a, a rough number of employees that would be working there?
Yeah, working out of this facility roughly ten.
Just identify yourself so Asia can record.
Yeah, Remington Miller, yeah, so roughly eight to 10 daily out of this. Generally we'll send roughly eight guys, so four different crews out on vehicles. So any given time there will be two to, two to three people in there.
And will this be multiple shifts?
Uh, no, just, yeah, uh, so all of our, our employees are full time, but it's not shift work, so it's, it's roughly, we're, we're open from nine to, to six P M. for them, so they're scheduled. Two of them will be off twice, or each employee's off twice a week and, so just kind of whatever their schedule looks like, but.
So your delivery trucks will be based out of this location?
That's, yeah, that's correct.
So out of the front on the overhead doors, which doors, because you've got the four that look like semis for unloading product.
Yes.
Are your drivers then using the other two doors and the covered one to load their vehicles and take out?
Yeah, the furthest north one is going to be for receiving, so all the semis that are, are coming in, then the, the three south are going to be for outbound, so that's going to be where we load out.
Okay, so based on this facing east and part of that, again, kind of between the industrial and the commercial part of it, so the first thing that we're going to see is going to be these four, four loading docks. Is there a reason we don't, you didn't do a shift on it and move these to the south end?
Yeah.
Or, or commercial on the north side?
Yeah, so, um, we, we really based a lot of the design and the functionality off of our Millers of Clapland Distribution, which is located in, in Clapland, Kansas. So as you guys are all, I'm sure aware, north is pretty brutal in Kansas, uh, so wind and, and then even the ice, so north was never in question. Uh, and then as far as the functionality, we had to have everything, the, the racking go one way. So, uh, and, and we wanted the future expansion to head west, so we couldn't do the doors from the south because you have to have the racks parallel to, to where the receiving doors are, so.
Sorry, and, and I didn't mean necessarily put it on the north side of the building.
Uh, or even.
I'm just talking about right here on the, on the east side.
Yeah.
And why didn't we shift those four docks to the south side of that and then put your, kind of your.
Yeah, so kind of like I was talking, so it's got to be, it's got to be across from the receiving docks, the racking, um, and, and with the, the plan to expand, um, we, we didn't have enough land to expand north for the building. Um, it, the, the expansion always had to go west and we had to have the, the, the doors caddy across from that, does that make, make sense?
No.
I think, I think what Commissioner Olson is saying, you have this canopy on the south end with the brick wainscoting and the, the glass overhead doors that is meant to be the main entrance for employees as well as the public.
Yes.
I think his question is, instead of having it, I'll pull it up a little, well, if I, I won't pull up a little higher, but instead of having it on the south end, why, why didn't you have it on the north end over here? Is that correct? Am I interpreting your question?
Yep.
So. In your first, off of Yoast Drive, when you're coming down, the first thing I'm going to see is more of a commercial type presentation instead of the industrial of, here's the four loading docks.
Okay, yeah, I follow you, okay, good. Not a, no, no real reason. I, I guess the primary is, so we need the level dock and, and we have cardboard balers, so they weigh fifteen hundred pounds and it's a lot more work to, to wheel it four hundred feet or whatever, rather than just go right up the door and, and put it behind the fence, so kind of resulting back to the functionality of it all is why. Uh, we, we don't want anything on the north side with the wind and everything. And so the two dumpsters, that's where the cardboard that we recycle, they, they pack them into a bale, we were going to store those behind that fence as well. So it's just less because it's, that's why the whole thing's level as well. Um, you put them on these little carts to get it out there and it's a little bit of work, so that's, that's really the main reason why we had it all to the south there.
So nothing with the racking system inside of it is based on that far north dock being there instead of it being on the south end of this, south side of this?
You could, you could flip those, yeah, if needed, so.
Is there any talk of having that automated, the racking?
So it, it, so what we do and pieces are very inconsistent, so generally the larger will be on, on the ground floor, but it, it's, it's like a, a lift. So it's a big platform roughly fifteen feet by four. Um, yeah, so they're cold pickers is, and then everything within, uh, the racks are, it's going to be on a guide, guide wire, so very safe, you don't even have to steer it, um, so, yeah.
And you said there was, how many employees would be here full time?
Eight to 10 roughly, yeah.
And then if you did the expansion out to the west, how many employees would that?
Yeah, uh, I would imagine at least five more, uh, we'd probably bring on two more delivery crews, so.
Okay. So if we did that expansion to the west, again, just looking in future, hope that you do it, so.
Thank you.
Parking coming in for that, additional staffing, what's our, how does that work for our number of parking spots at that point in time? And then would they have access to put parking to the west of that for additional employees?
Right, so, and without having specific plans, I guess if it's, because the area that they're proposing is, is virtually double what's there now. It's a one eighty by two twenty building and the future potential expansion that's shown is, is one eighty by two twenty, so it's doubling the building. So I would just guess roughly double the parking, since the building is basically a hundred percent, uh, larger.
Okay, so would that parking then have to go to the west of that?
Yeah, it would go to the west and here would be the footprint of the building, so you can see that there's still quite a bit of land left for expanded parking and, and I'm guessing the new terminals or the new trucking docks would have to go on the west side at that point, because you don't have any more space on the east side. Is that correct, Remington, is that what the idea is?
Yeah, yeah.
So we could do parking, you could do parking on the south too?
To the south too?
Yeah. To, to extend that and do, do parking on there, so, because you'd have to have to drive back to the west side, didn't you?
Yeah, I, I, I think the area is there, if that's the question.
Have you got to take a look at the eight conditions that were?
Yeah, I glanced at them, yeah.
Any problems there that you?
No, no, the landscaping, um, that's no problem and then, um, yeah, testing the, the water runoff and all that, yeah, no, no problem at all.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant?
Do any of the commission want to go over the conditions that staff listed on page fourteen? Are you interested in that? Um, sometimes we go through them, sometimes we don't, so it's kind of however you're comfortable.
I didn't see anything in there.
Yeah.
Think I'm fine there.
I did want to add, so Bill Miller too, um, who's, who's the owner of our company, he, he wanted to be here, he's down in Houston battling brain cancer, so I filled in, but, uh, yeah, so just please let, let me know, I'm, I'm kind of being the, the communication source for him right now, so anything that you guys want to add, just fire away.
I'm Mike McCall with M's Card Architects, um, just one clarification on the, on number two, um, on the storm runoff calculations, it just says if determined to be needed, has that been determined or is that still?
What, what that refers to is if the calculations show that the runoff can't be accommodated in that borrow area or you can't get to that borrow area at the south end, and then we, turns out we have to have some detention on this.
On that site.
Yeah, so the question to be determined is whether there's a need for any onsite detention on this site.
Okay.
Based, based on those calculations and where the water needs to go.
All right. As far as the tree units, now a juniper or something, that's classified as an ornamental? Or would that be classified as a?
Right, so there's a lot of different kind of junipers, most junipers probably fall into a, a shrub category. Now, there are larger, more vertical junipers that.
Right, and that's kind of what I was thinking here, so.
Yeah, so anything thirty feet or under is an ornamental. So if you got, if you're in the twenty foot range, then that would be an ornamental. I forget what it is exactly you proposed.
Yeah, I don't remember what.
But it, it, it would be classified as an ornamental in this case.
All right.
Now, you also would get credit for screening shrubs along, along your frontages.
Right, right, once you put those in, that would, that would.
You might, yeah.
You might get close with that with.
I think so.
How many square foot is, or length of property we got for screening that parking around Waterwell and on Yoast.
Yeah, because up, up to a third of your total tree units could be your screening shrubs, which, so yeah, you add those, you're.
Right, yeah, we're probably pretty close then at that point. The other one thing I wanted to point out on the, on the black and white elevation drawings, we did show a glass and some brick there at the front entry. The owner's preference would be to do what the rendering shows with the doors all matching and just stay with the dark wainscote across there instead of adding the brick. But if, I guess that's kind of up to your recommendations if that changes anything, I mean, we obviously can do like we've shown here. We were just got, we, we were going to do glass at first, talking with everybody during the last discussions, um, just working with the owners, talking with them about big furniture moving in and out, we've got these big glass doors. Maybe we've got to think about this a little bit differently. It does make the building a little more commercial, I think, with the doors glass, but it's also becomes a possible safety hazard with moving big furniture and work lifts and, and things around, going in and out of those doors with the public coming in to pick up their furniture or their chair.
Talking about this being a band across here.
Band.
Similar.
It would be the same, yeah, the dark, dark.
This, this.
Yeah.
Just be carried over.
It'd be carried all the way through, it's the same height, yeah. So, just wanted to bring.
And the overhead doors would look like the other.
They would be, we'd like, we'd like to do it like the rendering shows with the three glass panels, um, still getting light in. Um, the other thing, looking at that, I mean, we've got the white doors, we could possibly go to like a gray colored door or something just to kind of tone, tone that down so it blends a little better with the, with the building, but, uh.
And right now you have the brick planned for the front right there, right?
Right, the, on, on that building elevation, we do, um, owner would prefer just to do the metal wainscote across there, um, if possible, but we definitely can look at both options.
To, to me, it almost seems like that's the only chunk of brick you got.
Well, that's kind of why we've decided when I did the rendering, I went back and took the brick out and just made it all the same, so.
Let me ask you another question, I, I, I'm going back to Commissioner Olson's thought about putting the, the two small doors in the, in the entry door on the north end.
Right.
Of that, is that going to, would that present any problem to you guys? And I, and I agree with him, I think that that would make a, a, a nice initial appearance from when you first turn on to Yoast Drive.
I, 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 I think from this building standpoint, if we flipped it, I don't know that that changes a whole lot for us. Um, like you said, we've got the storage and, 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 and dumpsters on the south side there, which would have to stay on the south, so we'd have to haul things around. And they also use those to put old furniture that comes back that people pick up when they drop their new furniture off, they just, they come back around and dump them right into the, the dumpsters, so, um, but I, it wouldn't be that big a deal to flip it, we'd have a little changes in our drawing to, to make a few modifications, but, um, I don't think it would be, I mean, if.
It's a little more work for my.
Yeah. So, no, I don't, I think that's, I mean, it's a, it's a good point, I, I, I understand where you're coming from and it makes some sense to, to look at that as an option.
Hey Pat, are you referring to the, uh, more of the aesthetics or the entry being on the north? I didn't know if moving that entry to the south to where that corner is would, you know, force people towards that if you kept the corner where it is now, where the cutout is to the north side, if they moved that to the south more, I don't know.
Oh, the drive entrance, right.
Where traffic to the front.
Right, I mean, because, because right now where that cutout is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The commer, I mean, anybody coming in, like if I order a couch and I want to go pick it up instead of have it delivered, I would be coming in on that north side after driving to the south side. I would agree with you, if you did the swap so it looks more commercial on the north side of that east side of the building, move that cutout back down so you still have your access for your trucks coming in and out.
Yeah, that was the biggest reason, we kept it to farther that way, so you're coming right in till they can come in and take a left and then they can turn them back in.
Right, but I think if you just move that cutout down to that side, then all that ends up happening instead of me.
Right.
Turning in and have to go to the left to get to where I need to go.
Right, you're just coming in straight into.
I would become, oh, I would just drop your cut off, your cutout down like Derek was saying, drop it down this way.
Right, right, right.
Then they, your truck traffic can still get right into your overhead drawers, doors and it just forces the other people to go back up to the north.
Right.
That way you don't have your trucks trying to get all the way down and make that turn. I just think the presentation for that building in that area would keep it more of a commercial, less of an industrial with that swap.
I'm perfectly fine with that, we just have to switch the office.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we just, we just do a complete flip, a one eighty flip on the building.
We would, we would have to make the entrance a little further south too, it's a little more difficult to say.
Yeah, right, yeah, we'd want to, we'd probably want to bring that down another maybe twenty foot, forty foot, I mean, that's a forty foot now, so if you brought that down and then flipped that, so then the trucks still could get in and, and back and flip that.
Back on their good side instead of their blind side.
Right, yeah, 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 true, true.
So do we want to see that added to the number nine condition then, is that what we're looking at?
I guess for me on the aesthetics part and, you know, on, on making the decision of, does it go in, does it meet the kind of the requirements, I think it would for me on keeping it a commercial look of making that change on the building, so that's the first thing I'm going to see. Um, and I kind of agree in maybe even getting rid of the, the white doors of maybe going into more of a gray to kind of blend it in a little bit more, it doesn't stand out quite as much and it would still keep it more of that commercial appearance.
What's our opinion on the brick? You want to?
I, I, I don't see any need for it, I mean, I, to me the wainscoting looks good and I like the horizontal siding, you know, as, as part of the, the aesthetic on the, that side of the building, so.
I like brick, but, I mean, you're not going to do brick across that whole thing, so I agree with you there.
Very low.
One thing you have to look at is the setback of this building from Yoast Drive for the naked eye, you're probably not going to be able to detect the, the brick, it's not close enough to make a distinction.
Right, I think it's, otherwise the rest of the colors look good, I mean, I like the white across the middle with the Ashley Distribution Center in through there, I mean, I think it breaks it up and that part looks good. I think the white doors.
Any monuments sign or anything in the driveway?
Not that we're planning. Not that we're planning on any other signage, just the one on the building. Unless we do the whole side of water well, I guess we have probably enough square footage allowed to do it, but. But probably not.
We just had, yeah, obviously the pickup door.
Yeah, there'd be just a signage, a piece of signage above the pickup door, but that'd be.
Right. The other, other thing I was going to recommend, and I don't want to make us mandate or anything like that, but if maybe just think about even just a different tone of the wainscote for the pickup, for the customers, it might lead their eye, their, their focus to where they need to go, just to kind of differentiate that area.
Good.
Just, just a thought.
There's a thought. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is the one thing that the brick would do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of originally, we went to the brick is just kind of for that reason, make it, this looks like where I should go pick up my furniture at.
Instead of.
Which door do I go to? Yeah. When you pull in, but with the canopy and stuff that kind of hopefully will direct them. And the glass entry door, oh, I need to go there. But if we flip that and pull that down, then I think, you know.
The color speaks too, because I already know just after you guys made the suggestion, we already tell them by color of door right now. So if we tell them the dark gray, the white, they'll know exactly where to go. So that's a great suggestion. So that, that's not a deal breaker for, for you guys. And then is, is the brick a deal breaker for any of us? It's not for me. I have, I'm ambivalent. Personally, I, I don't care.
I mean, I like the brick better. I mean, I think it's more of a commercial look, especially for the people coming into it, but.
I, I, yeah, I just.
I could be swayed either way.
I've, I've worked at hardware stores in the past and I just know how people go. You're going to have, you know, Honda Civics pulling into the, you know, the semi docks. It just, it just happens.
Yeah, they're going to go, yeah.
The more, the more you could direct them to that area is all, is all I'm saying. Or, yeah, it's, I've seen it all. I'm sure you guys have too, but that's.
So is a consensus of the commission to go ahead and put that into the recommendation of, of relocating the entrance to the north end?
Yeah. My, my recommendation for a motion, if I think everybody is fine and we wouldn't want to mess with the eight conditions. So I think what the best way to do it would be somebody make a motion to approve the plan and then itemize the two or three revisions, subject to the following revisions to the plan and then make it subject to the eight conditions. So you're not blending revisions and conditions with each other. So a motion could be made to approve the plan and itemize the two or three revisions that the commission would want to see and then subject to the eight conditions. So I have, in, in my, in my notes, I've got moving or basically flipping the public entrance to the north side, shifting the driveway entrance to the south, eliminating the glass and masonry from the public area and substituting metal wainscoting and, and gray doors for the, the public area.
Yeah. And I, I agree with the, the, the glass doors. I think I would probably still go with the brick too. I think I'll, depending on how it feels.
Can we just leave that up to them?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, so I, I'd go ahead and make the motion with the, moving the, the public entrance to the north. The driveway, which direction was in the drive, south, okay? And then the material on the doors, making that similar to the other doors and then changing the colors and, and materials as you guys see fit. If you, if you see, if you think in the, in the big picture of things that a little bit of brick is going to do some good, put it in. And the same thing with the wainscoting. I personally don't feel. And then, then in addition to that, the eight stipulations in the staff recommendation.
Did we get that right, Dean?
Yep.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay, we do have a motion and second. Before we get any farther than that, do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak on this before we proceed?
We do not have anyone on Zoom and it does not appear we have anyone in the room, so.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second on this item. No more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries six oh.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you guys.
So for your benefit, we'll give you a written summary of everything that has happened. So you can get directions.
So.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you guys.
Very good guy.
Sorry, Asia.
I actually got it. So somehow it's a way I got it.
Should be watching the tape later. Okay, so we will move to administrative item three point four, the review proposed amendment of the city's 2022 CIP.
So part of the Kansas statutory responsibilities for a planning commission is that when a city is proposing a capital improvement program and proposing major projects as, as part of that, that those projects be reviewed to make sure that the city is not proposing to do something that conflicts or is contrary with its comprehensive plan. So you did a review at the end of December and we provided you with a list of the major projects being proposed. And most of those were ongoing things, including hike and bike trails and starting out the first phase of the Smoky Hill River renewal project. The only real new project proposed for 2022 was to retain the services of a design professional to do preliminary design for a potential relocation of Fire Station Four from Marymount Crawford to Markley and Crawford. And so the planning commission found that that endorsed that list as being in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Since that time, a new project has emerged and that project is the construction of a new building to, to store and house the city's new sanitation packer truck fleet. And the proposed location of that is at the general services campus at four twelve East Ash. And so the plan would be to remove a portion of an existing pole shed and to build a building that would be essentially parallel to East Ash Street. And that, that building would provide indoor storage. It would allow for indoor maintenance checks. It would have a wash bay for weekly cleaning and a repair bay for ma, ongoing maintenance. And that would allow a place for the city's new packer trucks to be stored. There's also a salt shed there and that salt shed would be eliminated and relocated. So because this is a proposed change to the plan that you approved in December, this has been brought back for your review. And if you concur that the sanitation truck storage building proposed to be constructed at the general services campus is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, then a motion should be made to approve the amended list to include the, the proposed new sanitation truck storage building. The total spending for the 2022 capital improvement project increased by three hundred and seventy-five thousand to accommodate this project. And so with that, I'd be open to any questions that commissioners might have. But it was just a, a project that wasn't all fleshed out when we brought it to you in December. So this is just to consider an amendment and to have your review to see if you endorse that project as being consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Could you bring that back up on where that's going to be again?
Yeah.
So for context, this is the field house and it's Ash and Fifth Street. So we are just to the east of it. And this is the general services maintenance site. So this is where we have a lot of equipment that is used for street maintenance and things like that. There is currently a covered salt spreader rack here that will be removed. And there's a quonset building here that will also be removed. And a larger building will be constructed in this location for the new packer trucks that you see that have the arms that come out for, for the new trash trucks. So it's to, to house and maintain and wash the, the new packer trucks. They, they're a larger truck and we don't have a facility to store them in. And so to keep them well maintained for a long period of time, they're trying to come up with a facility to store them in.
It's where your Sirius radio always goes out when you go by.
That's probably true.
So the quonset hood is what you're calling the pole barn, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And it, it would, it would be eliminated completely. And then this, there's looking for a new site for the, the salt. But that, that's where the, it's, that's not an enclosed building. It's open on the sides. But that's where the salt spreader would go load up to go salt the streets tonight.
And tomorrow, the next day.
I can tell you for what we're paying for those, those packer trucks, we need to make sure we got a, a good place to store them.
Where are they kept at now?
I think they're out in the open now because we don't have a place to.
Store them.
To store them. And so this, they, they look, and the primary review is, does it make sense from the comprehensive plan standpoint to locate them at the existing general services campus? And, and this is where the drivers report to work and it just is going to require, the site is kind of tight. So it's going to require elimination of buildings to replace with a newer building.
Are there eight of those trucks?
I believe there's six. What I was told is that they would, they would actually store, they're only going to wash trucks weekly. So at night they would store a truck in the wash bay. Cause they're, they're only going to be washed weekly. But it would allow for climate, climate controlled place for them and weather protected place for them to be stored.
Okay. Any more questions? Nobody from the public. I see that we have to ask.
No, this was, it has to go, the city commission approved the CIP on January third, but this is scheduled to go back to them for review. And they, they referred it back to the planning commission just to give you a chance to review and comment on the project since it does represent a change from what you saw before.
So we'll bring it back to the commission for action on that.
Go ahead, Carla.
I move that we approve the amendment to the city's 2022 CIP by adding the sanitation building.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries six oh.
Who had the second on that one? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then we'll go three point five, presentation of the 2021 annual report, continued from January eighteenth meeting.
Yeah, that's probably the first time we've ever done this in February instead of January. But each year, by the end of February, the, the Salina City Commission asks for the, each board and commission that, whether it's Parks and Recreation, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals to prepare a report saying, how many times did you meet? How's your membership? How's your attendance? What have you been working on? So we've prepared a report that kind of highlighted some of the projects that you did, some goals that have been carried over in the past, what our current membership is. And so we had seven members at the start of the year of 2021. And then Mr. Mike Sell turned in an expression of interest and was appointed to fill one of the spots for an outside the city representative. Mr. Jones was appointed to fill Mr. Baffa's expired term. Mr. Olson was reappointed to a three-year term. And then in November, Mr. Linkowitz was elected and is now serving on the city commission. So our full membership is nine appointed members. We currently have seven appointed members. So we need a member who currently resides outside the city limits and we need a member who resides inside the city limits. At this time, we don't have a youth member who has expressed interest. Asia is our new planning tech that's providing your administrative support. Dustin and I are your planning staff report. We have one vacant position in the planning department, but we haven't been able to fill it. So we're still seeking to fill that position. And then what we tried to provide in exhibit A was just kind of to summarize for you the variety and types of cases that you considered. One of the things we looked at when we double looked, looked at it again was that in 2020, you actually only had, we had ten applications that were filed that the planning commission looked at. However, of those ten, in some cases, we had two, three, four, five meetings on the same case. So we had a lot of meetings and hearings, but the actual individual applications was not that high. This, this time in 2021, we had forty-four different application cases. So if you felt like you were looking at a lot of things, you were. Then we would like you to look at the attendance. We transitioned from meeting once a month and having special meetings to, to basically meeting twice a month. And we'll continue that this year, but we had seventeen total meetings, regular and special. So if we think we've somehow misrepresented your attendance or got it way off, let us know. But one of the things that the, the city commission, they just want to know that their boards are active and that members are attending. So we have that. And then exhibit C just has your, the terms and your residence or contact information. If you, if there's something that we've got wrong or out of date, just let Asia know after the meeting and we'll get that updated. But the, the action would just be to review the report. And if you, if you don't find any inaccuracies there or something you don't want reported, then a motion just to, to send this report to the city commission, to the mayor and city commission would be the appropriate action.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Any concerns? Any changes? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back up to commission for a motion.
I'd make a motion to send this to the city commission.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to send this to the city commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries six oh. Thank you. Okay. That brings us down to preliminary discussion items, three point six, temporary signs in residential rezoning districts, continued from the eighteenth meeting also.
I had a, I had a discussion on this with the, the city attorney this afternoon before we met. And he, he, and both allowed that he, he thought at least the background part of this was helpful because the, in 2018 and 2019, the planning commission spent a lot of time talking about temporary signs and election signs and political signs and yard signs. And one of the biggest challenges that the staff and commissions have had is that based on that Supreme Court decision of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, essentially they're, they're disallowing cities or commissions or any, from referring to things like garage sale signs or real estate signs or political signs. So we have to get away from using those terms because in their view, you have to read what the content is in order to call a sign, a garage sale sign. So the emphasis has just been on the characteristics of the sign, its size, its setback. So the emphasis has just been on the characteristics of the sign, its size, its setback, its location. So, um, essentially we have an eight square foot size limitation for residential properties. And you're limited to two signs, but during election season, which is a particular time on the calendar, you can have an unlimited number of signs. In the 2020 election season, we had a couple situations where owners who had larger lots with larger setbacks felt like the eight square foot size limit was overly restrictive and they weren't able to express their political beliefs being limited to an eight-foot sign. And so the eight-foot sign is pretty universal statewide, nationally. Um, what we've noted is, is you drive around the community, a typical, um, real estate sign or garage sale sign, um, is about four to four and a half square feet. So the eight square feet is, is fairly generous. Nonetheless, um, staff believes that there could be some merit to allowing residential lots that are unusually wide or deep, um, to have a larger sign as long as they're on private property. And so, um, staff can't initiate a look. Um, it doesn't mean you're committing to making a change or taking any action, but for, in order for us to schedule it as an agenda item and, and have a public hearing on that and get input, um, it has to be initiated by the planning commission. So we're, we have this before you just, um, to see if you will by motion authorize staff to initiate a text amendment to that code section, just to allow it to be, uh, an agenda item for discussion. So this is just a background report and, um, we're just coming to you to see if you would be willing to initiate a dis, a discussion of possible changes to the current, um, status quo for signage. And so we've, we've got that highlighted for you. And then we also included the, the handout that we have that we use for election season that we give to all the, the candidates' campaigns. But, um, where, where we're at is that, um, we found, we had situations in 2020 where we didn't get voluntary compliance and, um, we've had some feedback from the community that they think that people with larger, deeper lots should be able to have a, a larger than eight square foot sign regardless of, of being residential or not. So this is on your agenda just for preliminary discussion to see if the commission would like to initiate a text amendment so possible changes could be discussed. Obviously, any changes that we have will be involving in getting input from the city attorney.
Just got one question. Um, on number four, it just said, uh, shall comply with setback requirements. Does this vary per residential residents, I assume, or is there a standard footage on setback requirement for signs?
On, when you're referring to number four?
Yeah, sorry, page, uh, 10 to 26.
Okay. So in all areas, um, public or private property at any corner formed by intersecting streets, are you referring?
Yeah.
Okay. So what, what we have is, we don't have any minimum setback requirements for temporary sign, only that all, at all times except election season, that has to be on your own property. But we have a separate city code that deals with street intersections and driveway intersections. And so what it's referring to, section 3551 refers to what we call the vision clearance ordinance. And so if somebody put a sign at the corner of Cloud and Ohio and they put it in such a place at the intersection that it blocked people from being able to see oncoming traffic and it's in what we call the triangle, that would be an illegal sign. So, um, in that case, during election season, somebody puts out a sign in the right of way, but it's in the clearance zone at an intersection, and that would apply to a garage sale sign if, if it's determined to be an obstruction to visibility at any intersection or impede sight lines or sight differences, then it's a violation. It's probably not, because of the width of right of ways behind the curb, it's probably not going to come up in the case of a, of a private property sign. But we have had situations with garage sale signs or political signs that are put in the right of way and we get a complaint that they're blocking visibility and it's, it's just a s, but unless it's blocking an intersection sight distance, if you put a sign on your own property, it doesn't have to be setback 10 feet or 12 feet or five feet, it just has to be on your property, on your side of the line.
Okay. Okay. Any, any more questions there?
So if we don't move, then there's not going to be a hearing.
If you don't move, then there wouldn't be a future hearing to discuss it. And we, we would go back and look at other options that, when it comes to a text amendment, the three choices are that it can be initiated by the planning commission, it can be initiated by the city commission, or it can be initiated by a property owner who is affected by a regulation. In this case, um, it was, it was staff that thought that it needed another look, but staff can't initiate on her own. We can only, um, bring it to you to see if you would like to initiate discussing any possible changes to the current status quo.
So actually, the only, only thing that's ever been brought up is probably during election time where people wanted bigger election signs out there than what?
Yeah. It's, it's just, it's, um, it, the whole state of the law is confusing. You, you just have to look at it that, and it's, it's confusing for staff. But I think, and we discussed it with the city commission and planning commission before when we did it in 2019. The, the way that the legislature, um, wrote their law, the, if you're in April or May and you're having a garage sale and you put your gra, your, your temporary yard sign and you put it in the public right of way, it is not legal. But during election season, when you can put election signs in the right of way, you can also put garage sale signs in the right of way because staff is not allowed to read what the sign says. So what, what, what's your, what you're regulating is the location and the size. And the Supreme Court says you can regulate those things. And then the state legislature said cities may regulate the size and setback distance for the placement of signs. And so what we've been asked to do is to open it back up, to discuss, to see if there's any interest on allowing signs greater than eight square feet in some circumstance. So if you by motion authorize staff to initiate that, we'll bring it back for a more detailed look and look at different options. If you say you're not interested, then, if you take no action, then nothing happens.
You know, we always rely on staff for our recommendations on a lot of things. And I mean, I, I do believe if, you know, if staff thinks this is something that we should re-look at again, I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal. So if the rest of the commission feels that we shouldn't, then fine.
This is, this is very limited and targeted, so it's not going to be open, reopening. Um, you know, essentially what happened was we spent most of 2018 reworking the temporary sign code. And then in, then we had the Kansas Attorney General issue a, um, opinion that said that the state legislature's action was constitutional. So that forced all cities in Kansas to go back and rework their temporary signs in response to that Kansas Attorney General's opinion. This is, this is nothing of that magnitude. It's basically going to be looking at eight square feet, where it applies, where it doesn't apply, 32 square feet, where does it apply, where does it not apply? Is there something in between, um, that you want to consider or look at? So we, we're bringing it to you to see if you would consider authorizing, taking a look at that. Again, it doesn't commit you to any action and it's not, not going to be near, nearly the work it was when we spent most of 2018 and 19. I think it can be handled in one meeting unlike the other ones, so.
So do we, anybody care to make a motion?
I, uh, motion to offer our staff to initiate a text amendment to section 42 dash 508.
And I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second. We have a majority that wants to approve that motion.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a show of hands on that motion. It's a split, all those in favor of going forward with an amendment? All those opposed? Okay. That, that motion fails for lack of a majority, so we'll report that back and we'll see if there's another avenue for that, so.
Okay. Okay. Uh, any unfinished business or other business?
Well, we attached something just to, uh, it's probably of more interest to Mr. Mike Sell than anybody, but, uh, the Supreme Court and the courts can't stop messing with signs. And so there's, there's currently a Supreme Court case on electronic billboards. And so what the planning commission came down with was essentially the only place that you can have an electronic billboard in Salina is within 200 feet of an interstate highway. So we have one out next to I-135. But the commission decided that, you know, if you have a static billboard at Ohio and Crawford or Ninth and Crawford, those shouldn't be converted to electronic or digital. And most cities have taken that approach, but it has been challenged in federal court. And there's like two or three circuits that agree with that approach and two circuits that say that that's not constitutional. So it's currently before the Supreme Court to be settled. So we just wanted to put that in there to let you know that it's still not settled law because it keeps coming up. So in that case, if something happens there, you won't have a choice about looking at text amendments. As far as, um, as far as other business, um, just to give you an idea of what's upcoming, we will have a meeting on the 15th of February. We have an application filed, um, to annex zone and, uh, subdivide a piece of property. It is, if you know where Foxborough Drive is, it goes north of Schilling Road. It's east of Centennial Road. It's south of Magnolia and it's north of Schilling. And there's a proposal to plat and develop an area for townhomes there. And what they're proposing to do is to have cooperation from the airport authority to connect a street over to Centennial Road that would connect into that property. So that will be on your agenda. There's a proposal to rezone and develop the property, um, we've been discussing. And you approved a plan for the home addition at the northwest corner of Ninth and Waterwell. There's a proposal to zone and develop the southwest corner of Ninth and Waterwell. That will be on your agenda. And then, uh, future application in March, uh, there's a former, um, manufactured home park on what, south side of West Cloud, just west of Broadway. And there's a proposal to rezone that for multifamily apartments, um, on the south side of Cloud, west of Broadway. So those are, those are current applications that are been filed, um, for your future review. And then, um, we've had, I guess it's ranked second only to win the Sonic Drive-In added batting cages, but there seems to be a lot of, uh, feedback we're getting or commentary about the, um, parking situation with McAllister's Deli. So I guess I would allow planning commissioners to, to state any comments or concerns or have any questions for us about that situation. The McAllister's Deli is, um, that was a property that was zoned C5. It's part of the leftover property from when the skating rink was demolished. The, it was purchased by the people developing Club Car Wash, but they didn't use it all. So they sold part of it to McAllister's Deli. And it's a rather tight site in terms of being skinny and maybe not as deep as you would like, based on the seating plan, the square footage of the restaurant, building, the seating and all. They have adequate off-street parking. When you may have different observations, Dustin may have looked at it as well. When I've looked at it, anywhere from 50 to 60% of the off-street spaces are vacant, but marketplace is full of cars. And so there's different possibilities. There's a possibility that the manager of the restaurant is requiring employees to park in the street and not allowing them. In most restaurants, when we do our, our calculations for off-street parking for restaurants, it's designed to accommodate both employees and customers. And so ideally, any restaurant that opens in Salina, they have sufficient parking both for employees and restaurants because that's the whole point, is not to force people to park in the street. The other side of it, and this is part we'll, we work, we'll work on internally, but frontage roads parallel to Ninth Street are not as wide as a standard residential or local street, and that's by design because they're not designed to have parking on them. So based on the width of the street, it is not legal to park on that street. So then that becomes an enforcement item. But in my experience, a lot of these things, the source is you have to go look at the, at management or administration of who's on the site in terms of what employees are being directed to do. So we had a situation and now I think most of the yellow, um, striping has faded away, but the, the previous management at Stack Care at Republic in Ohio directed all employees not to park in the parking lot and to park on Republic. And so the city started out by striping Republic about 400 feet east of Ohio. And then all the cars were parking just beyond that. So we extended the no parking all the way to Manchester. And then the cars moved to Manchester. And then, so then we posted Manchester for no parking. And it was all because, not because they didn't have adequate parking, although Stack Care is tight, but it's because they wouldn't. They directed employees to park in the street and said, you're and said, you're not allowed to park in the parking lot. And we had a similar situation with eight, South Eight Street opposite Salina Regional Health Center, where we found the employees gave us the written correspondence they received directing them to park on South Eight Street and not park in the off-street parking. And so the result was the city went out and posted in South Eight Street for, it is unfortunate because like on South Eight Street, you don't, if you post it for no parking, then the residents and their guests can't park there. And their problem was the residents and guests couldn't park there because it was all lined with employee vehicles. So we don't think it's because our parking standards are inadequate. We believe it's because management is directing employees or employees and contractors to park in the street and not in the lot. But we're looking at that further. So I don't.
Is that a situation that they, should it come to, they could stripe that area?
Well, it's really an internal matter where it's been directed to the planning staff to, to look at when it's just, it's just a plain fact of law that it's not legal for vehicles to park there. And then it becomes, there's, whether it's public or private and different things, it, it's simply an internal matter for the city staff to work out. Is it the police's job? Is it planning staff's job? Is it the street department's job? Whose job is it to get those cars off of there? We have the same problem where we had the connecting road that was built behind Mocha's and Freddie's to connect the back of Popeyes over to Lewis that you looked at. The road went in, we made sure it got completed. And next thing we know, we see a whole bunch of cars there parked, which makes it almost impassable to vehicles and emergency vehicles, which again defeats the purpose. That's not a street, so that's our responsibility to clean up. But we're not, we're not unaware of those things, but many of those things, it's a communication thing between, a lot of times the manager of a facility doesn't know anything about the design things that went into it or, or even know sometimes that it's there. And I, I at one time went out to do a site visit and met the manager of Walmart on site and said, we've gotten complaints about your detention pond not draining, full of cattails and all that. And the manager said, what pond? And I said, let's walk to the back of the building right, right there. That pond there is owned by Walmart and you're responsible for maintaining it and draining it. Well, nobody told me. I just worry about the store. So sometimes managers don't know the design things that went into something upfront. So it's a matter of identifying the right person and then getting behaviors to change. But we don't, we don't think we have a failing with our off-street parking requirements. We think it's just a, a communication thing. But obviously, we've gotten complaints from Club Car Wash, we've gotten complaints from citizens. We've driven by and you can see the, the curb line lined with cars there for no apparent reason. So we are aware of it and we hope to get it rectified.
In that same vein, in that same corner?
Mm-hmm.
When you're heading west on Belmont, where it goes in between Burger King and Spangles? Yeah. That intersection that's still on Belmont, the arrows that's on the pavement? I mean, there's the sign back behind that shows you turn lane, straight, right turn only on the pavement. That's all faded, people don't do it. I don't know how many times here recently, car in the right-hand lane, I'm going straight. They're about to run into you, so.
Okay, no, that's, that's one of the good things about being on the planning commission and having these meetings is that you've got, you've got a conduit. We've, we've got a pad and pens and we write these things down and then we follow up and report back. So we'll, we wanted to let you know that we are aware of the situation at McAllister's, but we don't, we don't think it's a failing of our standards for restaurants. We think it's a, it's a managerial or communication thing and not, not something that's wrong with our standards. They didn't, they didn't get a relief, they didn't cut any corners on required parking, but it is a rather narrow site to try to fit a restaurant on, so.
Any other questions?
Just one more quick question. I know this isn't probably much to do with us, but more of the city commission. They are aware that there's a lot for sale right next to the fire department on Marymount for sale for possible expansion?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't know if that'd been looked at or if.
No.
One, get out, get out of the residential neighborhood completely?
It's, it's been for, for sale for about twenty years.
Forever, okay.
But it, it, the planning commission approved a, it's a, it's a plan C-one. The planning commission approved a specific plan for that lot. And for some reason, I mean, it was architect design plans and parking, building design, all that stuff was approved by the planning commission. Neighborhood filed a protest petition against it and all that. But I, I believe it was for a combination medical office and something else. And for some reason, it didn't get built, but it, it zoned, planned C-one and has a specific plan on it. But yes, the, the city is aware that that's there. But there's, there was a study done a few years ago and there was a recommendation in that study that moving the, or planning for the relocation of the fire station could be helpful as, as the city grows towards Holmes Road. And then the Markley location is a little more accessible to eastern parts of the city. So it's, it's a combination of location and space.
Gotcha. Okay.
But we have nothing else for you other than say we'll see you on the fifteenth of February. We will meet.
Okay, no public forums, so can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.